Good morning, welcome back to another video y'all. Um, if you are new here, please make sure you like, comment and subscribe and you, and if you are returning, hey cousins. Um, y'all, I'm on my way to school and don't mind me, I look a mess per usual during this nursing journey. This is not the real me, but anyhow, I'm on my way to two big exams, y'all. I'm nervous, my ass is in my, is it my ass, is it my stomach or my stomach is in my ass? One of the two, but girl, I'm nervous, I'm nervous. Uh, I'm not trying to over study, so I did go over. First of all, the exam is the math, uh, doses calculation exam and then, uh, my pharmacology two exam. My for, my, my second, um, exam for pharmacology and I'm nervous because the math is like, if you don't pass the math exam with a ninety or better, you don't go to the next semester, the next term. So you do get three tries, but I'm not trying to have that type of anxiety going on. I'm trying to pass the first time and keep it pushing. Um, I'm normally okay with math, I mean, I haven't did math in like years, but I thought I was good with math, but hmm. It's a little shaky with this doses calculation, but I did go ahead and do a lot of practice sheets, so. And I've been getting like nineties, ninety fives on them, but you know how when an exam get in front of you and then you start forgetting everything? That's me, so hopefully that doesn't happen today. After that, we do have lecture, but I'mma use that time and study for my form exam, but. Um, I'm doing okay in form, but still, this is our first exam, like all the meds and we're, is covering cardiac meds, respiratory, respiratory meds and hematology meds. Yeah. So your girl is nervous, but I'mma say a prayer, I'm about to finish listening to my music to uplift my spirits, because I don't want to walk in here with any bad energy, any anxiety. I want to be as calm and. I just want to go into this exam with good spirits. Let me turn that off, cause I know that's annoying. I just want to go on this exam with good spirits, um, exam day is always tough for nursing students or students in general. Um, a lot of people may know the information, but the way they ask the questions, I know that that's an easy way to get the answer wrong, because they like to switch up stuff, so, um, I'm just gonna take my time, I'mma be there. I'm be the last girl standing till the time run out. But yeah, I'm on my way here, I didn't, I'm not even gonna stop and get me no breakfast or nothing, y'all, like I'm about to go ahead and go over my notes real quick. It is seven thirty-four, I'm like maybe six minutes away from the school, so I'm gonna go ahead and hurry up and try to go over my notes and then do the math exam and then, um, go ahead and study. So I'll get back on camera a little later, y'all wish me luck and I'll talk to y'all in a bit. Hey y'all, so I just got back from taking the math. Um, I don't know if I told you or not, but for the math, you have to get a ninety or better and you get to take it three chance, three times. Uh, you get to take it three times, but if you don't pass, you don't go to the next term. Um, a lot of people made simple mistakes, I think I did good. Uh, we don't get the results like right away, so I gotta wait. She did go over the answers, but I can't remember all twenty, um, things that I put. Um, I think I got like one wrong, you, so you gotta get an idea only if you get two wrong. So I think I only got like one wrong, but we'll see. Hopefully I don't have to retake it, but you know, we'll see. We do have our form exam up next, so I came out to my car and I am studying. Sure like the, I could not sit in that class knowing that I have an exam coming up and. Mm-mm, so I came out here to study, I'm about to get to it and I'll come back on camera. For this exam, we know what we get right away, so. And I, I'm not as confident as I was with the math with this, so y'all, we gonna see, but I'mma holla at you in a minute. Hey y'all, it's a little bit later on, um, the exams went well, I did pass both of them. I'm so happy that it's over, um, I'm not really too for sure if I passed the first one, the math exam. Um, because I, I told you all that we have to wait for it to get graded or whatever, but I think I'm good. Um, so I'm just happy it's over with, it's Memorial Day weekend, I got four days off, I'm off from school and work, so I'm about to go ahead and chillax, that's the word, hold on. My little sister goes on her prom, so we getting the house together, because we gonna have like family over and stuff. I did vlog her eleventh grade prom last year, this her twelfth grade prom, that's her that was at the door, hey Lima. So we getting everything ready for tomorrow, getting the house together. Um, I'll probably get back on camera later, but I'm about to finish helping out with this and yeah, see y'all. Say bye Lima.
Bye y'all, see y'all tomorrow.
See y'all tomorrow. Hey y'all, so it is a few days later, y'all, um. I didn't vlog the whole weekend, I do apologize, but I, I'm still in the mood to vlog, in the mood to vlog, y'all, um. I didn't have any work, I didn't have any school, uh, four, four days, so I wanted to really just enjoy it, so. Sorry, but not sorry, um, but yeah, the prom turned out real, real nice. Um, my sister really had a good time, she won best dress at her prom and she looked beautiful. I'm happy that it's over with though, because it seems like when you're planning like big parties and like proms and like things of like that nature, it's very stressful on everybody, so I'm just happy that it's over with, um, but I think she still do, she sleep. But, um, today y'all is Memorial Day, I'm just getting myself, um, ready for the week. I go back to school and work this week, so I just wanted to get myself, um, time to get situated and just relax today, like I ain't feel like doing nothing, I was praying all, all weekend, like literally praying all weekend, so. I'm chilling today, I'm catching up on the new season of Married at First Sight and it's mid. I don't even really, I ain't really, I don't know what the season, but I'm watching it, um. And I have to wash clothes and cook dinner and yeah, just chill, I'm looking crazy right now, but that's okay. I also wanted to show y'all what my mom did to the bathroom, it looks very, very nice, so I'm gonna go ahead and show y'all that real quick. So here we go with the sink, I got all my stuff right here, but yeah, she, um, painted the wall black. She added like the stuff that on there, it's just so cute, she even changed, she even changed like the waterfall set. And it comes out like that, it's just like, it reminds me, it remind me of like a spa. But like when you open these curtains, it's normally like this, so like, yeah. But it just give you that like effect when you close it, it's just very, very nice in here, like. My nose on my red, so don't mind that, but yeah. And then this mirror right here, don't mind me, looking crazy, um, but yeah. She did a really, really good job with the bathroom and it just reminds me of like a nice relaxing spa. So yeah, I just wanted to show you that. She also rearranged downstairs, but she's not finished with it, so, yeah, I guess when she's finished, I'll show you guys the end result, but I'm about to hop in the shower and get myself together and I'll talk to y'all later. Good morning, let me try that again, that was fake, good morning. Yo, I'm trying this morning, I'm at clinicals, first day back after the four day Memorial Day weekend and. I don't know how I feel about it, it's not even that I gotta come to clinicals, it's the fact that my clinical instructor today, me and her really don't mesh and. I just hope I have a good day, I'mma stay positive and. Hmm, the sun is beaming already and it's like six o'clock in the goddamn morning, but anyhow. I'm going to stay positive and think happy thoughts and hopefully I'll have a good day, um. I think I'm at this place today, tomorrow, and then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday of next week, and then I'm done. Um, clinical rotation and then I think I have like farm lab for the rest of the term. This term is going so fast, like it's almost over, like I literally have hmm, like three to four weeks left, like. It's crazy, but yeah, let me go inside, it's six forty-five, we gotta be here at six forty-five, no later than seven, so I'm about to run my body in here. I don't need her to start no mess with me, so I'm about to go in and I'mma talk to y'all when I come out. I hope you guys have a good day, it's probably not the same day that you guys see this, but I hope y'all have a good day too. Hey guys, so I just got a clinical, y'all, um, I'm actually about to find something to eat. I'm thinking about getting some honey grow, cause I never heard it before and I hear it's pretty good, it's one near my clinical site, so. I think I'mma stop there, I honestly don't know what to get and I don't wanna like try something new or waste my damn money and I don't like it. So I don't know, I'm still thinking about it, but I'm about to make my way to the library. Hopefully I get one of those rooms, cause I know temple there's, uh, I go to the temple library. I know that one of the rooms in there, uh, a lot of the rooms, like you get prior rooms, like how you guys seen in my last vlog, it's really for the students, but since the semester is over, it's open, so it's like first come, first served, if nobody is like using it, so. I hopefully it's nobody in there, so I could use it, um, but yeah, let's get on. Y'all, I just made it to the library, I done got here and now I'm sleepy. But I'mma stay though, I'mma stay, I'mma stay and I'mma go on for like an hour, I never got the food, cause where I was at was thirty minutes away and I didn't want it to be nasty and cold, so. So I didn't get it, but I'mma get it next time, I'mma get it next time, I'm about to get my butt up and go in this library, this week exam is on endocrine, endocrine or endocrine, endocrine system. So diabetes, so I'm about to, the study got not that bad, the study got not that long, so. I probably can run through it, usually I do like three or two, no, two to three pages, probably like three pages each day and then the day before the exam, I go through all, the whole thing, just like to make sure. But I make sure I understand everything on the three pages before I move to the next section. That's how I study for math surge, it works for me, I've been passing my exam, so I'mma stick to that. So far as form, I don't know, y'all, I wanted to make the flashcards, but I feel like they take too much time for me. It works for other people. I just try to, hmm, okay, there we go, I just try to memorize everything. Form is nothing but memorization and repetition, like keep doing it, keep, keep learning it and you'll get it type of thing. So, yeah, I'm about to get out this car, hopefully one of the rooms is open, hmm, it's twelve o'clock almost. So yeah, we're gonna get out of here about one, so yeah. Y'all, it's so nice out here, it's like eighty something degrees, hmm, you feel good. I probably go to the gym today too, I'm trying to stay active, stay on point, you know, give myself a different type of routine, I'm trying to stick with it, I didn't go running since that day I went on with y'all. I felt like the weather was like very like gloomy right after that and now it just got back nice again, so I could start my walks back up. But my walks will probably be like after class and stuff like that, so yeah. But I got very much comfortable vlogging outside, like or like in public now, like, cause before I used to be all shy, like hmm, people gonna see me. Child, I'm walking down the street, everybody looking, I don't care, gotta get the content for the girls and the guys. But y'all, yeah, I'm about to walk in and check in or whatever, cause if you're not like a student here, you gotta like check in. I'm about to check in and I'm, um, call y'all back when I get to the room. So I just got into the room, um, I printed my study guide out at home. I like the colors, they help me remember on my exam, so I like to print it in colors and section, section everything out and yeah. I don't know, I got like a photographic type of, I don't know, I don't know what kind of learning it is, but, um. Like remember stuff like pictures and like, maybe I'm a visual, maybe that's visual learning, so. Yeah, like I said, it's not that lengthy, so I probably gonna go over the whole thing since I'm here. If not the whole thing, then like four pages of it and then do the other, I'll do the half if that makes sense. I think in total. I don't know how many page it is, but I'mma do it, I'mma do half today, half tomorrow, go over the whole thing Thursday and then take my exam Friday, so. They got lip pen at the end.
It's glyptins.
All the words got.
Tag glyptins.
All them got lip ten at the end, that is for type two diabetes.
Yep.
It, um, the adverse, the adverse effect is, um, rare, rare, um. Don't tell me. Shoot, I can't think of the word, it's rare pancreatitis, pancreatitis, um. What else, what else, what else, um.
My system is acting crazy. My system is acting crazy. My system is acting crazy.
Upper respiratory, um. No, mom, stop telling me. Upper respiratory, um, aniophylactic, um. That's why you had allergic reaction, uh, angioedema.
Yes.
Um, headache.
Yeah.
And that's it.
This rash though, what is it called, what is that rash called?
I don't know.
It's two people names, it's two first names.
I don't know.
Steven Johnson.
Steven Johnson, yes, and that's like, that's like severe, that's like deadly, that's a rash, yeah. Steven Johnson.
And then it's two more, two more, nah, she got all of them, she already, she just did them. The antifreeze thing.
Alright, insulin is the rapid insulin, that is, the onset is. Free, the onset is fifteen to thirty minutes.
Yep.
The, um.
So that's the rapid acting.
Fifteen to thirty minutes to onset, the peak is there, uh, half an hour to two and a half hours.
Yeah.
The, um, the duration is three to five hours.
Yeah.
The next one is, um, short. Acting insulin and that's the regular insulin.
Yeah.
That's. Um, a half an hour to an hour.
Yeah. Peak is what?
The peak is an hour to five hours.
Yeah.
And it's six to ten. The next insulin is.
When do you give it?
I don't know that yet, I gotta learn that.
Thirty minutes to sixty minutes.
Oh wait, you know what, yeah, cause the first one is you give it one to something.
Five to ten minutes.
Five to ten minutes before this one is thirty minutes to sixty minutes before. Okay, then the intermittent is, uh, insulin is the MP, MPH and that's the cloudy, um, insulin and you want to, the, the, the onset of day is one to two hours.
But what do you need to do before injecting, it requires what?
A rule?
Mix.
A mixing.
Yeah, requires mixing before injection.
With what?
Cause it's cloudy, it don't say, it just say requires mixing.
Oh, okay.
So go ahead, what's the onset?
One to two hours.
Yep, peak.
The peak is six to fourteen.
Yeah.
Hours.
Duration.
Um, sixteen to twenty-four hours.
Yes, and how many minutes before the mill?
Thirty to sixty.
Yep, and then it's one more.
Whoa, acting insulin and that is seventy minutes. There's no peak. And eighteen to twenty-four hours. Y'all, I just got finished studying. My mom be trying to tell me the answers, but I think I know enough information to get, what you think I'mma get? Mom, what you think I'mma get?
Cause I helped you, are you finna get a hundred?
Now, I don't know how that.
What's the passing grade?
A hundred.
No, you, what's you can't go under?
A seventy.
You gonna get a, uh, ninety-five.
I don't think I'mma get a ninety-five, cause the way they ask them nursing questions is crazy, you couldn't know all the information. I think I'mma do like a low eighty, high seventy, around that, the range. Around there, around there, but my exam is tomorrow, I'm done studying, I'm not about to over study, whatever, I don't know, I don't know and yeah. I'm probably gonna call y'all back in the morning, I feel confident, I'm grateful for my support system, anybody that can help me study is greatly appreciated, but.
Your mother, because I'm the best help you study person. Cause when the girls help you, you be bored. See, I bring excitement, that's how you know, when you get the eighty-five, ninety-five.
Bye y'all, see y'all in the morning. How you think you gonna do on the test?
Well, I gotta get a ninety, we all gotta get a ninety.
We gotta get a ninety on the math, but what you think you gonna get on the form again?
Probably get an eighties.
Alright. Petey, what you think you gonna get?
Hopefully I pass, I just prayed I pass, that's all, I'll go and like get one of the passing grades.
Alright. Good morning y'all, so today we having some type of big ass sim lab and. They got, they got outside like, um. Hey girl, so they got the outside like a big sim, so we gonna be like acting and stuff, it should be fun. Hi Carol. So it should be really fun, I'mma get back on camera, so I'mma get back on camera when we figure out what we doing exactly, so. Marissa, they don't feel like being on camera, y'all, it's too early, I'mma call y'all back. Looks pretty real. The makeup team did their thing. The makeup team did their thing. Was it fun? You had fun? You're tired? You're tired? That was fun. Everybody did a good job. What's up?